I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you, as our viewers can tell, we started this committee, the meeting, early tonight because we have to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing a matter relative to student safety. And so at this point, to go into executive session, I would need a motion. Ms. Hunt?
I'll move that we go into executive session to discuss student safety.
Is there a second? Number second by Michelle Badger. Are there any questions to the motion? Okay, this has to be a roll call vote, starting at the end. Yes, Ms. Badger, yes.
Yes.
Morgan, yes. Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes.
Yes.
The school committee will go into executive session to discuss student safety. At the end of executive session, we will come back out here in open session and continue our evening business. Chief Wouchere will be joining us in executive session. I apologize for our few minutes of being late. We are in an executive session. So we are now, we already started our meeting with the pledge, and then we went to executive session. And now we're at a really nice agenda item here, welcoming our international students and faculty. Dr. Mestes.
Yes, we have had the very distinct honor of having some students come from Milan, Italy. And I have Rob Powers at the table. He's our social studies coordinator. And Allison Reardon at the back, and she doesn't want to be on camera tonight, probably. But we'll zoom in on her anyway. But just want to give you a brief introduction, then Rob can talk about it a little bit. We had the opportunity to connect with a colleague of mine in Italy, probably a year and a half ago, and talked about the possibility of doing this exchange. And to see that here we are, a year and a half later, and students from Milan are here, and students from Plymouth will be going to Milan, and creating this partnership where students can come and stay with families and go to school and experience what it's like to be in another country and another school system, and really identify the benefits of being in school for a week or more. So Rob and Allison have been lassoed into being part of the organization of helping us get this together. And Rob is gracious enough to come and talk a little bit about the program and kind of give you an overview. So, Rob?
Sure, so good evening. It's exciting to be here to introduce our guests from Collegio San Carlo in Milan. This is part of a program that you approved earlier in the spring, which is a one-to-one model exchange program between our students and the students at Collegio San Carlo, which is a school that is K-12 in the center of Milan. And the students that are visiting us for this part of the program are actually all in the STEM wing of the school. So just as much as this program is about cultural experiences and the history of the area as well, it's also an opportunity, thanks to Allison Reardon, for the students to take in the STEM experience, both within the district and the opportunities that exist in the Boston area as well. So we have 12 students from their high school level STEM program. And they are guided here by their two teachers, Margarita Sessa and Francesca Paragino, who are here. Most of the students are here tonight with their corresponding student and family. They arrived on Saturday afternoon, so it's been a whirlwind start. They had one day with the family. I already know that there were a lot of fall activities going on and acclimating to the area yesterday. And then today, they spent the day shadowing their corresponding student and attending all of the classes with them as well. Allison also brought one of their faculty leaders to a science conference today, and she'll be bringing the other faculty leader to a science conference on Friday. So they get a little professional development while they're here as well. And we have a very ambitious agenda for them while they're here. Some of the days, they'll be shadowing the students that they're staying with in school. And then other days, they'll be leaving them to participate in different cultural activities or STEM activities. For example, tomorrow, we will be taking the students and their teachers to Boston for the day. We'll do a guided tour of the Freedom Trail in the morning. And then after lunch at Quincy Market, we've arranged for a campus tour of MIT. And they will do a tour of the plantation and Pilgrim Hall and a walking tour of downtown Plymouth on Wednesday. They'll spend a few more days at the schools with their corresponding students. They'll spend the weekends, the weekend with their families. And then for two days next week, they will be participating in a variety of STEM activities at Plymouth South Middle School and also at the high schools. So a really packed agenda. We have some evening activities as well. We will have a potluck with all the families closer to their departure. They'll be dropping in on a Northern Lights rehearsal and attending a planetarium show. So not bored, I think, is what this experience will be hopefully. But what really excites me about it as well is that this is part of this new global learning initiative that I came to present about in May. This idea that our students will not only be hosting and building this relationship here this month, but then traveling to Milan in February during February vacation and taking in art and history and culture in that area and continuing this relationship with the same family, which is really exciting and truly the type of global citizen that we're looking to build here in Plymouth, so.
Well, with that itinerary, we're actually honored that you were able to make it here tonight. So please introduce the crew to us.
Sure.
Do they want to come up? Yeah.
Everybody.
How about we do this? How about host students will bring their students up and introduce?
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Oh, you thought you were gonna get out of there.
You want to hand the mic? Rob, you can take the mic off and just have them stand up and do it.
If they can't pronounce names, they can say...
Okay, I feel like a talk show host. Who would like to go first? All right, oh, here we go. Your name and then the name of the student that you are hosting.
Alexandra Godfrey, and this is Gaia Toñato.
Nice, nice. All right, who's next? Headed back here. All right.
Hi, I'm Garen Anderson, and my exchange student is Julia.
Okay.
I'm Steven Charuna, and my exchange student is Alessandra.
And feel free to wave if you're from Italy. Great.
I'm Abigail King, and my student's name is Sofia Bueno.
My name is Laney Powers, and my student is Nietzsche Papaletta.
Great. Did we get everybody? Cool. So we have a few other families that couldn't join us this evening, but that's our crew. We're really excited to learn alongside them for the next week and a half.
That's great.
Any comments from Ms. Hunt?
Of course, I have to make a comment to everybody. So this summer, I took my daughter and spent two weeks in Spain with a girl that lived with me for a year when I was your age, 35 years ago. I've been there three times. She's been here. So take advantage of every opportunity that you're getting right now. Stay in touch. It's gonna change your life. You're gonna think about it every day, and it just makes you a better citizen. And just enjoy it because it's definitely life-changing. So enjoy it. Like I said, I got to take my daughter back after 33 years or 35 years. So it was pretty, it's pretty cool. So you're making friends that you're gonna have for the rest of your lives. It's amazing. Thank you for doing it.
Okay, thank you so much for coming here this evening.
Thank you. Get some rest. They look tired.
I know. I saw a couple of them today when...
They got that down.
Yeah, jet lag was...
They are. It looks like it's off. Nothing, I just like typing with nothing on the screen. Yeah, I can see what you're doing over there. Absolutely nothing.
I can skip the next agenda item.
Well, there's two people sitting here.
They're here for the...
They might have something else.
Okay, let's do our student representatives. Student representatives, can we start with North?
Oh, start with North? Hello, everyone. I'm Jack Freeman. I am the senior class president for the class of 2020. And just give me a moment, because if you told me in the first grade, which was, I don't know, like, over a decade ago, that I was gonna be sitting across from the dream ride guy, I'm on a bike, I would have called you crazy. I would have laughed in your face. You would have had a little six-year-old at your knees laughing at you.
The truth is, Jack, you are, so keep going.
Take it all in.
So this is my first time at one of these. This is the first time, actually, I've had to wear a suit as the president of my class, which, I won't lie, feels awesome. Jealous that you guys get to wear suits every day of your lives.
So since it's your first day, we'll now listen to South so you can understand what usually happens.
All right, okay.
Hello, everyone. Student athletes, coaches, faculty, and parents raised over $600 to fight against breast cancer at the field hockey game last week. PSHS will be doing our annual Pink Day next Friday, and we will definitely be making a sizable donation for the cause. Our guests from Milan have arrived. PSHS students and staff are hosting one teacher on four students from Milan. We are so excited to build a global learning relationship with Italy. Thank you to science coordinator Allison Reardon and social studies coordinator Rob Powers for organizing the itinerary for the week along with PSHS lead teachers, Mrs. Sorensen and Mr. Schuler, who will both be traveling with our students to Milan in February. Students from France will be visiting us next week. Host families from both North and South High School will welcome our guests on October 27th, and we'll have a true one-to-one exchange as our hosting students will travel back to France in the spring. Special thanks to Ms. Beach and Mrs. Lewison for organizing this exchange. The biomedical program will honor the junior cohort with the annual white coat celebration on Thursday in the Black Box Theater. Students will receive their lab coats in recognition for what they have achieved thus far in the program. STEM week is here. Congratulations to project Lead the Way teacher, Dr. Jessica Mead, as she was selected as the 2019 Massachusetts PLTW Standout Teacher Award. Dr. Mead goes above and beyond every day for her students. It's well deserved. PSHS graduate Sarah Francis presented at the PLTW conference today on the student panel at WPI. Sarah is studying biomedical engineering, biomedical engineering. Parents have been invited to our first of many parent forums this Friday at 7:30 a.m. in Culinary. The topic is vaping and school initiatives centered around this issue affecting our teens. Mr. Hannah and Mr. Lint Ranger, along with the health teachers in PYDC friends, will lead the discussion, answer questions. Life Touch will be back Thursday for picture makeups during all lunches. Did you visit trunk retreat Halloween festival this past Saturday? Well, if not, you missed an amazing event hosted by Skills USA and the National Honor Society. The feedback has been amazing, great job to all, and cannot wait till next year. Congratulations to our new Patriot League champs. The football team clinched the title with a win over North Quincy last Friday and will host a playoff game on November 1st. Currently, the team is ranked number two in the South section. Congratulations to the coaches and players for all their hard work and dedication. The Plymouth South Unified Basketball Team took on the Eagles today at home. What a great showing by our students' cheer and dance teams. We packed the house to show support. Congratulations to both teams on a great game. Breaking news, the boys' cast country team are their league champions for the first time since the two schools have been combined. Led by captains Strickland Davis and Nathan McPoint, they put a hammer down on their arch rivals Hanover today. We are so proud of the team and the coaches. Finally, my perspective. So I just started doing unified basketball this year, and I think it's a really awesome opportunity like that both schools have because it's a great way to like bring the community together. It's just a good atmosphere.
Fantastic. Okay, Jack, now back to you.
All right, awesome. Great job. You've been here before. So first of all, as you all know, NIASC is visiting our school. They visited us for the first day today. I know they were here yesterday. It's comprised of 16 educators from across New England. They're visiting North to evaluate our performance in seven standards for the renewal for another 10 years of accreditation. I've met a lot of them. They're great people. They're friendly. You would barely even notice them if you didn't reach out to talk to them. I was in the conference room with two of them today, two teachers from New Bedford. New Bedford, sorry. A special education teacher and a history teacher. It was a very pleasant experience. It wasn't at all as nerve-wracking as I thought it would be. They asked me questions about our school. I answered honestly. We have a great school. We have a great group of teachers, and I really enjoyed having them there. Life Touch picture retakes will take place Friday, November 8th. For any of you who want to get your pictures retaken by Life Touch. PNHS athletics. Plymouth North High School is excited to announce that four of our athletic teams are moving on to the MIAA state tournaments. Congratulations to the girls volleyball team, boys soccer team, boys golf team, and field hockey team. We're wishing all of our athletic students luck during these tournaments. I know golf had their first match today. I'm obviously waiting to hear about that. I have a lot of friends on the golf team whom I care for very much. PSATs. Huge thanks to the guidance office, the most underrated office at Plymouth North. They're always there for any student that needs them. They were incredibly integral in preparing our students for PSATs. I know they just helped me send in my transcript and my SAT scores. So they're great down there. They did a fantastic job. And as we just saw them come and then swiftly leave, the Milan Exchange students are at North. We're hosting eight STEM students from Milan. Students arrived on Saturday, October 19th, and will stay with host families until the 30th. While here, the students will visit many of the Plymouth historical sites along with the Boston Freedom Trail and tour MIT. During the school day, they will shadow their student and experience special science classes and visit the Blake Planetarium as well, as... Oh, Mr. Powers. As he said. Hometown's Handmade Fall Fair. This is something, personally, I'm in student council, so I've been involved in helping plan it for four years. It's very nice. I've always enjoyed the craft fair. If the spring craft fair was any indication for how many vendors, visitors, and events there will be at student council's fall craft fair next Saturday, you will be very impressed. They wrote it in all caps. It's next Saturday, takes place from 10 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and student council will host 105 vendor booths, face painting, live music, and much more. Be sure to stop by. The Fall Drama Production will be the servant of two masters on Friday, November 8th at 7 p.m. and Saturday, November 9th at 7 p.m. Both performances will be held at the Plymouth North High School Performing Arts Center. End of the first quarter. Marx closed on Friday, November 1st. Well, they close, it says closed here, I'm sorry. And report cards will be distributed on Friday, November 8th. All parents and guardians should expect their student to return home from school with their report card. Homecoming. Homecoming Weekend was a major success with over 700 tickets sold for this event. Thank you to Kim Walcott and Elise Glenn. They're not on here, but I just wanted to thank Alex Antonino, Josh Brown, and Jeff Yang. And I won't thank myself, but we all really came together this year and planned homecoming and pushed people to go, and it was a lot of fun. We sold a lot of tickets, but obviously, we couldn't have done it without Mrs. Walcott and Ms. Glenn. They're great. And we also this year tried a kind of a tailgate before the football game, the homecoming football game. We brought out games, face painting, free raffles. We did a pumpkin decorating contest. Students seemed to love it, and it was a great success because we've had difficulty getting student participation throughout the years. And don't worry, I'm almost done. Finally, Mr. Parsons' parent page. Principal Peter Parsons, say that three times fast. Most current page is posted. This is a great way to stay informed on all things Plymouth North. Thank you, guys.
That was a great report for your first report.
Thank you.
Now you really set the bar high.
Yes.
All right, thanks a lot to both of you. Okay, we have a updated council plan. Dr. Mestes?
Yes, tonight we have the update to Plymouth South Elementary School's school improvement plan, and we have Principal Adam Blaisdell is here tonight to provide this update. So we want to welcome you, Adam, and you can do introductions. Or introduction.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank John Duffy from my school council for joining us tonight. People have a bunch of plans, but I...
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Last year, we presented the beginning of our three-year school improvement plan, which had four goals on it. The first two really focused on increasing MCAS performance in both ELA and math. The third goal looked at social-emotional learning and really looking at utilizing leader of me in second step and really looking at decreasing behavior referrals. And our fourth goal was really looking at family connections and really create more curriculum-focused opportunities for our families to engage in. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things from our first goals, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about our action steps for the upcoming year. The first thing I wanted to highlight is, one of the things that we talked a little bit about was really social-emotional learning. And years ago, we had started a PBIS, a Positive Behavioral Intervention System, approach. And we revised it quite a bit this year. And so right at the very beginning of the year, we introduced cub coins to our students. We really talked to Federal Furnace and really kind of modeled a lot of what they were doing over there and really brought it to South. So students are basically reinforced for any positive behaviors that we see. And if any staff member is involved, then kids just receive a simple coin. And they bring that back to their, for any, like I said, positive behavior. And the staff, one of the things they have to do is be very, very specific about what the behavior is that they saw so the students know what was reinforced and what to repeat. And then when they go back to their classroom, there is a little fishbowl. Fishbowl means nothing. It's just a collection device, but there's a fishbowl, and the goal is just for the class to fill up their fishbowl. And then at the end of that, they receive some sort of class incentive. And the class incentive can be very simple. They wear silly socks one day, silly hairdo one day, reading for a period of time. So it's a very simple, can be very simple. Then the next piece would be that, then once they fill that, they bring it, and they fill up basically a larger gray level type of bowl. And once they fill up that, the gray level receives some sort of incentive. And again, the incentive is very, very simple and don't take much time. And then when the gray level fills up their bowl, they fill it into a large tank. And then the goal is just that the school were to fill up their tank. And then there's some sort of incentive for the school. If all the kids vote on whatever that incentive is. So we're really not having any influence on what that might be, except for kind of keeping it simple. So when you walk in, if you were to walk in our front lobby, you would see these fishbowls. There's a picture of it in the bottom right-hand corner. See these fishbowls and then the gray level ones, and then the larger fishbowl. And there's a few pictures of some of our kids just bringing their classroom fishbowls to the gray level fishbowl. So this was something that we revamped this year, and the kids have really bought into it. They love it, I'm sure. Kids, I know kids are going home and talking about coins that they've earned. And again, it's a simple coin for any positive behavior that they're showing. So this really targets really our goal in regards to increasing the positivity in behaviors and decreasing referrals in our school. The other one that I want to highlight is, again, really looking at that social-emotional, but keeping kids on track, is we had created this past summer, and I think you probably have seen some of these on the news, sensory hallways for kids. And the teachers spent quite a bit of time at the beginning of the school year teaching the kids how to use these and what they're, how to follow it and so forth. And so teachers will bring their class there. Sometimes teachers will have kids, just a few kids here and there, go down and use it to get back on track and then come back. And even to tell you the truth, when the kids are walking down the hallway, they're just using it on their way to class or the bathroom or wherever they're going. But so teachers were explicitly teaching kids to do that. To help with recess, to give kids other things to do at recess, our PTA spent quite a bit of time this summer. It was supposed to be last April, but because of the weather that we had last April, they spent quite a bit of time this summer giving kids something else to do. So repainting four-square, hopscotch, there's quite a, they painted a track inside of our tennis court. So they spent quite a bit of time really just, again, trying to give kids something to do at recess, a little bit more structured than just replay. So those were just a couple of the highlights that I wanted to talk about from some of the things that we've been doing this past year. And then when you look at the status of our action plan, all the pieces that are in red are things that were done this past year as well. But just want to focus on, we have five action steps that we're really going to focus on this school year. And it's really based upon, the reason we picked these were really based upon MCAS data, benchmark reading scores that we had given to students in the spring and in the fall, discipline, attendance, and some prior survey results that we had done a little while ago. So the first action step that we're really focusing on is really looking at getting students to participate in a lot more problem-solving activities as we, throughout the week. And that's really from looking at our MCAS data, looking at how students are performing. That's really one of the places where we fall, is really that application-based. How can we get kids to solve problems of tasks that they know how to do, but just they're not applying? If you look at our MCAS scores, you'll notice that our grade-three MCAS scores went up quite a bit, and our grade-five and our grade-four have gone down. What we had noticed in grade-three is we had been implemented, we implemented math workshop last year. And our grade-three teachers spent a lot of time with doing PD with our math coaches and outside consultants. So we're really seeing that pay off. And if you were to walk into the classroom, you'd see the students a lot more engaged in different activities and what they're doing. And the teachers are really working on trying to implement a lot more problem-solving in their classrooms. We have a couple other grade levels. We have grade-two that kind of implemented it on their own with some oversight from some of our math coach. And grade-four has started it last year again with some oversight from our math coach, but really are there engaging in some math PD this year as well. So we're hopeful that those few steps will really help with some of our other, increasing our MCAS scores there. But we're really also making it a point in making sure that problem-solving activities are incorporated into classrooms throughout the week multiple times. And we're also looking at, the other piece that we're really focusing on is we've, I've scheduled all of our staff meetings really to be focused on looking at student work throughout the year. So teachers will be coming with actual student work, and we'll be analyzing those at all of our staff meetings. And that's rotated through reading, writing, and math. And we're using a district-created rubric to kind of look at the math portion of those. And like I said, we're really working with our literacy coaches and math coaches to plan those staff meetings. What are we looking at? And making sure that it's associated with whatever current units that we're working on. So teachers have to bring current work. It can't be a month or two old. It has to be something that the kids are doing now. Our second action step looks at that designated meeting time that I just spoke about just a moment ago. And that's really, like I said, we presented the beginning of the year a calendar for all of our staff meetings, and it rotates through the year. And our math coach and our literacy coaches have been joining us at those meetings as well. And our third action step is looking at attendance. If you look at our absenteeism, our chronic absenteeism increased from 4.8% in 2018 to 6.6% in 2019. And last year, we did spend some more time looking at attendance and sending attendance letters home and making phone calls and following up, but we did still see that increase. So we're kind of stepping it up. We're gonna continue to do attendance letters that we have. We're gonna be working with our... we have. We're going to be working with our attendance officer a little bit more. But we're really going to fall back and really trying to do some in-school as well, where we're tracking attendance and classrooms with 96% attendance or greater, get a paw that they can post outside their door. And whatever the class had the best attendance that week will get a gold paw. And it's just something that they can post. And we started it a couple of years ago. We didn't do it last year, and it, we did see kids really kind of buy into it. So it's just a visual reminder of, how is our class, how are we doing with attendance? And it really helped. Our fourth one is looking at second step. It's really where we have been working with the leader of me for a couple of years, is really implementing second step on a consistent basis. At the beginning of the year, I provided teachers a pacing chart, basically it said, this week, teach this lesson, this, so we really laid it out when they should be teaching certain lessons. And this also looks at the whole PBIS system that we recreated and restructured, so that is also involved as well. Other things, when it talks about strategy tools in this action step, a lot of the classrooms have implemented calm-down corners where kids can use calming strategies that they've taught them. Once a week, we get, we have a morning meeting where the whole school comes in to the gym on Wednesday mornings, and having 630 students in one room can have, can cause, have some effects on some students. So we have that available for kids in the gym as well during that. And like I said, we talked about the sensory. And our final action step is having each grade level conduct a student parent teaching concepts of curriculum. Our grade-three, the last year, had invited parents or grandparents to come in, or aunts or uncles, or whoever really wanted to come in. And they did something, I think they called it muffins, muffins for math, math with muffins or something like that. Really, it was, the kids were sitting down with the parents or whoever came and taught them a game or taught them a skill, and it really was well-received. And it's one of those things that we've been hearing quite a bit about is, I don't know how to do this as a parent, so if we can expand, we're looking to expand that to other grade levels as well. So those are our five action steps.
I wanted to touch base on absenteeism. Is there a way, like, school-wide, that you guys could post either an email or something to remind everybody the rules of absenteeism? And that it actually, you can actually be fined if you have continuous absenteeism? I don't know if anybody really realizes the repercussions.
I think that's a great idea. I think one of the difficult points with absenteeism is, parents don't realize it until it's too late. And I think if, and that's maybe something that principals can do during open house, talk to parents about, even in the newsletter, about how, you know, it's, the Massachusetts general law indicates that 10% of the school year is deemed chronic absenteeism. If you miss 10%, and it's unexcused, you should fail. That means you'll get retained automatically. I think we deal with a lot more in high school than we do with elementary, but when you start seeing 6%, 6.6% of the students of a school that have chronic absenteeism at South Elementary, that's probably 50 students.
It's a staggering number.
And for us, that's concerning because we find that those trends continue. So it gets worse as the years go on. So I think your point is well-taken, and I think that's one thing we can strategize, is just so that people know that it's not the school trying to be, you know, on you. It's the state law says your child needs to be in the seat for us to educate them.
Because it has gone in newsletters, and it has gone home, and it has been spoken about, but if we could take it up to the next level and have it come from the next level, then it might be received a little better.
I like the suggestion.
On the topic of absenteeism, I think there's a great, there's a very important educational piece that has to go to the parents, not to the students. Because when you start in second and third grade to tell the child, well, it's your birthday, you can take off from school, or we're going on vacation to Disney World, so you're going to miss the week. Once you create, what you're creating with that is, school isn't that important, that there are other things that are more important than school. And once you plant that seed, it takes root. And then when they get to the high school, the littlest thing, they stay off, they stay home, because they've already, they've already learned early on that school's not that important. So I think part of this is educating the parents that you don't take off because it's your birthday, you know, and other things.
No, it has to go to the parents. The parents are the ones that are actually allowing them to stay home, so, especially in the home.
And I think when we had, when we did the pause a couple of years, even though we're sending out the letters, but even though we were sending the pause out, it isn't, it isn't a second graders. But when the, when the child goes home and says, oh, we got a paw because we had 96% in our, like, they, they made it important, and then the parent kind of shifted some thinking. And so it really wasn't the second grader. It was the second grader going home and saying, look what happened because we had great attendance. So, but you're right, it's.
I am going to agree with Jim. It could possibly be a strategy that can be incorporated in the family engagement piece, because honestly, I think of my first grader, to elicit information from him is a difficult at best, you know, hey, it was, oh, fine, you know? So you don't hear those, you know, pieces of information. So it's to get the buy-in from the parents as to the importance of what being in school is and what absenteeism does to their students. So maybe just incorporating that into that, the family engagement piece. Because I can honestly say, if it's something that's received in an email, you're so inundated with like emails and pieces of paper, unless it's something that the child needs to bring back, if it's homework or something like this one, then that's something that will catch my eye, as opposed to an email. So it's, sometimes it is that, you know, one-on-one piece, or information that's given that perhaps the parents say, you know what, this is truly important, so, I don't know.
Okay, let me, now I'm going to dovetail that. At the National School Board Conference, I attended a conference on letters going home to parents and what's the value of them. And the conclusion was that, if you get a card in the mail, it's just a card, you're likely turn it over and read the other side. If you open up a letter from the school, you probably don't read it. So if you want to send a message out, put it on a card and make it, make it four sentences. The chances are it's going to get read.
Yeah. Okay. You have a floor. Are you finished?
We're finished. If you have any other questions?
Questions, more questions. Ms. Bajer.
I don't have any questions, but I was really, I really loved hearing that you mentioned that in the beginning of the presentation, and you said, we took this from Federal Furnace. I know we're always saying, like, oh, that's a great idea. Have you talked to another school? It was wonderful to hear that, because I think when we find best practices and things that work, we need to do a better job as a district of applying it everywhere else. So thank you for working with your peers and using the tools that were already there and not having to recreate a wheel, because who needs to do it when you find something that already works? So thank you for that. And I have to say, the absenteeism thing, when I was reading your goals initially at the top, where you had the red and things you were going to do, I thought, oh, these kids are going to, where it said they're going to, that some, certain grades were going to track their own attendance. And I was thinking, the onus, that's wonderful. You're putting it on the child, and obviously the parents still have some involvement because they're young, but I thought, hmm, maybe that'll increase the attendance, the likelihood of attendance, and I'm sure you thought the same thing. And I was really surprised to see that it went up instead of down, and, but, you know, but that was just a surprising thing for me. But I really liked how you really have taken a lot of thought into the steps you're going to take to reach your goal. You've looked at the places you've tried things, and what has worked and what hasn't worked, and you're taking what's worked and really kind of building on that. So thanks for a great presentation.
I have a specific question. Would you bring the slide up on the MCAS scores? Specifically, oh, I have it written down here. Maybe you can speak to it. When the, this is the MCAS 2018, fourth grade math scores, 44%. And then when those fourth graders were fifth graders in 2019, it was 33%. That's the biggest change in percentage points of anything else on this chart. So it really jumped out at me. So what happened to those fourth graders?
We're still looking at that, to be honest with you. I mean, one of the things that we saw was our constructive responses were not, we really fell down on those. There were a couple of other areas where we, where we had fallen as well, but I mean, one of the glaring pieces was constructive response. And the other thing that we've noticed, not just here, but with our ELA piece too, when you look at what a student does, and this is something, again, we're looking at too, when you're looking at what a student produces in writing, in their writing journals or in their notebooks, some of the students can really, really show us, and this goes for math as well, and how they're responding in math, some of them can do a really good job and can write a, write a story and do, and give us a lot of thought and detail. And when you ask them to do a constructive response in math, they can do a decent job. You throw them on the computer, and you compare this and this, and it's like, what happened? So that's one of the things that we are, I've told, I've had a conversation with the staff this year and said, they don't always need to be writing in their writing journal. Whatever we thought had happened before, you can, I want you to take some in the writing journal by hand, but they need to be using computers constantly, because what they're creating on paper by hand isn't what.
Interesting, very interesting. I think you had a, I think you had a really good point there.
Also, I don't know if you noticed, for my job, I've been doing a lot of research on this year's, or last year's MCAS. And one of the things that I learnt is, especially under grade seven, that all the grades across the board for the state are lower because it was the first time they got the Next Gen test. And a lot of schools, not necessarily ours, a lot of schools, the first time they use the computer. So when you just said, when they get on the computer, it's different. So I, I don't know if you've found, I know, I know, and it's, and it seems to be in writing that I had the problems too with my job. So I don't know if there's something with that, that test and that part of it, but it seems like that's the, that's the same issue I'm having.
You've been doing computer for years.
Yeah, but it's the next, the new test across the board, they're having lower scores.
But it's the first time we've really looked at, like, what are they creating on their own, and what they're doing here.
Yeah.
First time we started looking at it.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes, Dr. Blaisdell said, it's a difference between using the computers and then using it for testing purposes and getting them to understand that, you know, this handwritten writing sample, you know, if it's going to be of quality and adequate, you need to think about how that translates to the technology. So giving students opportunities to engage in those, we don't want to get it, we talked about this earlier, we don't want to get away from having students writing, but they need to have opportunities to engage in the technology that the test is in for everyone to prepare them for that. So it's, you know, it's, it's looking at standards and looking at making sure that they're practicing those standards early and often, but also applying those into the integration of the Chromebooks and the technology that they'll be using for testing purposes. So it's, it's a whole different genre that we're getting them ready for, really, in that regard, so.
And the evaluation levels are different too than they've ever been, right?
Yeah, it's hard, the tests are harder, for sure. I think, getting back to some of the things that Dr. Blaisdell has pointed out into his report here too, whether it's his attendance or the academics, he's mentioned Star Math, we have our, he's mentioned Benchmark. We've talked about Panorama a couple of times, both tonight and in the past. So we're, for the first time, as a district, K to 12 are using a progress monitoring tool for all of our students. So we have all of our students, in terms of their academics, their behavior incidents, whether it's an infraction that deals in discipline or not, we can document that, social-emotional learning issues, as well as their attendance and other factors, so we're monitoring that. And some of these tools that are referenced here give us some predictability because they're aligned to state standards. So it really gives us real-time data that we can create opportunities at the building level through the principal, but also in grade levels and in team meetings to have conversations about how kids are doing. Because the best thing for us, regardless of what we're talking about, is really knowing where our kids are at and responding early and often, and more often if they're struggling.
That's great.
Okay, anything else regarding this presentation? Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
A follow-up on the Panorama. What happens to the data when they graduate?
Oh, jeez, we haven't gone that far. It's archived? That data is archived? No, we, so right now, this is our third year having it in some regard in the, in the school department. So that data gets archived for, it's, we control it, because it's really coming from our own student information system. So it's just a portal that displays it in a way that's easy for us to navigate and to create plans, so that stays with us. We have that information. In fact, when the students leave South Elementary School, it will go to the middle school and follows them. And we'll have all, we can go back. So eventually, as a high school principal, the high school principals could go in, or anyone at that building level could go in and then look at students and how they performed when they entered, first entered our school. And we can look at attendance, we can look at their attendance, we can look at their behavior, we can look at their academics, and really kind of tell a big picture and use that information to help, you know, guide our supports. But we, we control that.
1984.
Sorry?
1984.
Big brother.
Big brother is watching you. And now he has it documented. And he keeps it.
Yeah, Ms. Bajer.
And it's something that's going to be with this child throughout. So just hearing you, it kind of stuck with me, it made me think. So I have a troubled elementary school, and then I get to middle school and I do better. But is my teacher going to see that immediately and expect me to be maybe that troubled child?
No, so it doesn't go to the teacher, no. The teachers only see the students in front of them. So they're going to see for that particular school year, they're not going to see that we have that at district level and administration has certain points. No, we, it's, it's about having that and using that to help create interventions and success plans when necessary, but not to mark a student as having attendance issues necessarily from back when they were in kindergarten and track them in high school. But we have that, so that we, it's more about knowing where they're at and trying to be prepared and transition better from one year to the next. So it's, no, we're not using it.
I figured, I just, it just.
It also.
Alarm bells for me.
No, it's a very good point. It also allows us, because what our, what our goal with this is not just to monitor, progress monitor, and to have that data there, but to create success plans, so teachers are meeting in teams with their, about their students, creating plans. So we can now track our intervention plan, so we can say, all right, we've been trying level literacy intervention, for example, in this, with this grade level. How is it working? And we can pull all the kids that are in that and see how they're doing. So it gives us good data about how are, are these truly best practices? Should we continue with this? So it kind of gives you the macro and the micro.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, we're going to take a break. We'll reconvene at eight o'clock. Ten-minute break, please. I've had a request.
It wasn't me, it wasn't me.
We're all back, so. We're going to bring us back into session. Thank you very much for coming back promptly. We'll just have a small update on our superintendent's search process. Ms. Fry.
Yes. We have, as you all know, we've put out a number of items for the community regarding information sessions for the community to come and share with us what they're looking for in the new superintendent of schools. For parents and community members, it's Monday, November 4th, from 5:00 to 6:30 here, and Thursday, November 7th, from 7:00 to 8:30. I am meeting with Rich Harbert tomorrow, who will get this out in the newspapers, and it's also on all of our social media forums. We'll continue to share, and we'll also do a all-call to parents and things like that next week when it gets a little closer. We'll, at that meeting, we'll have guided questions and just asking for feedback and input. We also have five sessions for faculty at different locations all over town. We're actually using the PD Day, where all the staff will be on the South Campus. We're having one as voluntary at the end of that as well, which I think will be well-attended because everyone is there at that time. And at that point, we will take the data and share, obviously, the school committee will be involved in that. And in December, we'll be sending an electronic survey out to all the school community to get that data. And then the job will be posted probably the middle to the end of January, once we gather that input, redesign any job description needs we have, and put that posting out. So that's really just a brief update of where we are now. There, Dr. Masters' picture is on all the flyers. Their, Dr. Mastis' picture is on all the flyers. And so, but those will be put out in any other forums that anyone thinks is necessary too, so.
Okay, any committee members with questions? I would add that I had a couple of town meeting members on Saturday ask me about these forums and about the screening committee, so I just told them what we had. Okay, moving to the next agenda item, which is the annual review of the resolutions for the Massachusetts Associated School Committee Conference that's coming up in November. November, is I have it? Yeah, November eighth.
November eighth, yes.
November eighth, right. Okay, so, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, we have a number of resolutions in preparation for the MAS-C, MAS-S Conference in November down the Cape. And the first resolution is relative to the polystyrene foam availability in food service programs. There are schools around the Commonwealth that still use styrofoam, which Plymouth is one of those school communities that still does use styrofoam. It's been in existence for quite some time. I believe, you know, my recommendation is that I absolutely do support this. One of the things that most schools will have to consider that they use polystyrene is there's a significant cost increase to using alternatives to polystyrene. So although we do support it, I do support it. I think there's some monetary item that we have to adjust as time goes on because we have done an analysis of what it would cost for us to change away from polystyrene. And there would be an increased cost for school lunch prices for the district, probably raised by about a quarter. So that would be something that we'd have to consider. Keep in mind, that is not only Plymouth, but that's every other community. Plymouth, the Plymouth Public Schools, just so that people understand, is we are a one-hundred percent food service program that is supported by the revenue that the food service program generates. So this is a budgetary item. So when we pass our budget in December, not pass our budget, present it, you'll notice food service, there's zero dollars in there. Keep in mind that in the future, if something were to change, the school committee will have to make a decision as far as budgetary increases or an increase through policy at this point where we do have budget increase or price increase for school lunch. So I think it's a great opportunity. I have received letters from students over time regarding this issue. I have, you know, ten years ago, talked about this issue, but it's a matter of cost. In my time, we've raised our lunch prices twice. And those were, you know, it's harder to raise a lunch price, you know. So we're getting to the point now that at the high school, it'd be three dollars a lunch when we try to keep it under three, you know. So it's something for debate down the road, but just so you know, that's going to be the impact to every school that has to be involved with making a change like that. It's going to have to come from somewhere.
Just to clarify to the committee, we will vote on each one of these resolutions tonight. And then the representatives will take our vote to the conference. So now we're discussing resolution number one.
Who's our representative?
Me.
Ms. Hunt? Ms. Hunt, regarding resolution number one.
Okay, so I went to the informational meeting for all these resolutions and I took some notes. Now, just know that these aren't my opinions, these are just my notes. Because there was a lot of discussion on all of these. And for this one, some of the things that they brought up as a point is to note, the important part about this resolution is the part that it's not going to be effective till twenty-two, twenty-three. And the reason why they don't want to wait till that, they want to tell you now is so that the schools have a chance to prepare. And that right now cafeterias and schools aren't recycling and they don't, cafeterias don't have the option to recycle. And that warm foods release the styrene and that I think within the year, both McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts are going away with these. So those are the notes that I took on that one.
Ms. Badger.
I think this goes perfectly in line with what we were talking about. We've taken our recyclables, open new business or old business to kind of transfer it into, what are ways that we can use biodegradable materials? And so I think that, you know, it goes along the lines of what we've been talking about. And I know if everybody is required to or may to, the prices have to go down. I mean, it's the supply and all that, so hopefully.
And that's what they did talk about that as well. They said that's the hope, but by then, more people will be doing it, like McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts.
Mr. Morgan.
Are some styrofoams recyclable? I know that.
But not in every town.
What's that?
It just doesn't recycle in every town.
Okay.
I think it says in here too.
I know what my recycles, for my vendor at home, there are certain styrofoams that have the mark on it.
Well, my vendor won't even recycle anymore because he said, they said it doesn't.
Mr. Selly.
Costs money.
My sentiments for Michelle Headset. I know since I've been, this is my second term elected, we've been having these conversations about recycling. It's come off non-old business and new business. It's been something we've had a struggle with. But, I mean, we can send a man to the moon, but we can't make, you know, a cup that's biodegradable. So, I mean, what do we do in terms of, you know, keeping clean products in the schools and, you know, making sure we're making the right decisions for it? Because, I mean, it's coming through, so.
We can certainly vote in favor of the resolution, but we have to understand that it probably is going to be an increase in the lunch prices down the road. Ms. Badger.
I move that we support this resolution.
And we have a second. Ms. Badger has made the motion to support. Ms. Hunt is the second. Are there any questions? All right, and we're going to vote.
Excuse me, who was the second?
I seconded.
I'm sorry, I was sleeping at the wheel.
It's Chinatown.
He just did it for tomorrow.
Waiting on two more votes? All right, now waiting on one more vote? And everybody has voted in favor. Thank you. Resolution number two, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, this one is relative to the EMTEL, which is the assessment for teachers. And there is a resolution that is relative to eliminating the EMTEL to increase diversity of applicants for teaching positions in the Commonwealth. And, you know, I am, you know, I'm not in favor of this because I believe if we lower that bar, I think there are, in my opinion, there are other ways to increase diversity in our school systems on the teaching end other than lowering the assessment for our potential teachers. So, you know, this is a difficult one because EMTEL has been around for quite some time. A number of adjustments have been made for EMTEL. And I'll give you an example. When I first started teaching, there was not an EMTEL. You didn't have to take it. It was, you got your license, you proved you did your coursework and so on. After I got my principal license, and I don't know what I was thinking, I thought maybe I want to be superintendent one day. I landed up taking, I had to take the EMTEL. So at the time, you had to go to Braintree High School. We're probably in the same class. But it was Braintree High School and you had to listen to a tape recording. And you had to transcribe the tape recording.
Interesting.
Okay, and you listened to it once and for content, listened to it a second time and you had to transcribe it in correct grammar, the whole thing. And it was probably three or four pages of writing. And at the time, I took it, I landed up passing. But about two years later, they eliminated that because there was some issue with diversity of applicants didn't have the ability to do that type of transcription because of dialect, because of different type of background that they had in their education. And I've seen some things change with EMTEL over the years. I think EMTEL is a good indicator of entry level of what we want our teachers to be for reading and writing. And that's what EMTEL does, it's for reading and writing. We have content-specific EMTELS that are for math, science, social studies, special education, administration. And they are getting a little bit more rigorous based on the course content that you're going to get certified in. So you have your basic EMTEL, which is the one that I believe this is in reference to. This is not in reference to some of the more specific, content-specific. If you want to be a physics teacher, well, you should have that content, right? So, again, I was able to pass the EMTELS. I'm a minority candidate. I worked very, very hard at studying and doing everything I possibly could to actually prepare myself to become an educator. I believe that our candidates would feel that they want to pass a standard too to be in the classroom. So I'm not sure what the context was on why this was proposed. I'm not sure if Ms. Hunt has any information, but I just don't feel comfortable suggesting that we would eliminate an assessment for entry-level teaching.
Ms. Hunt?
Okay, some of the things that they had talked about is the cost involved. And they also talked about teachers that are close to other states who kind of like just rather just teach in the other states and not choose to teach in Massachusetts because of it. There were a lot of stories in the room just like yours, but they were in the other opinion of, what they said is that EMTEL is good for test takers, not necessarily educators. And yes, it's for reading and writing, but not teaching. One of the things that they said is that sometimes the centers are inaccessible in the cities and that what they wanted to, what they've been talking about is substituting it with a portfolio model and actually having somebody supervise them actually teaching in order to evaluate them as to whether or not they're a good teacher as opposed to just to take this high-stakes test. I wrote down accredited college, I have no idea why. And that they wanted the districts to evaluate. And they also said elimination of EMTEL and mass performance assessment for leaders. So that's the same thing, right?
But again, if that's the case, then the resolution should be very specific because this is saying to get rid of it.
Right.
It should be, you know, if there's a funding issue with an EMTEL, I think that's somewhat easy to resolve.
Yeah, and I think it says in here too, whereas the cost of testing can be a barrier to potential applicants.
The resolution has a, is conflicted to me because the second half of the resolution talks about leadership at DESE. And it says that, if I read this correctly, it says that if you hold a teacher's license, you can't be on the leadership committee at the Department of Secondary and Special Education. And so then it goes on to say, let's eliminate both those tests, EMTEL and MATPA.
That's the PALS.
But it doesn't link them together. It's not clear to me as, it's two different topics in one resolution. Not described. Ms. Badger.
I would have to agree as well. When I was reading it, I thought that it was, and I am not a test taker to be a hundred percent like out there. So it's hard for me to say that someone should have to take a test. I mean, I think I would still be in high school if the like, M-CAS were a thing. Like, I got out one year, if I was one year younger, I'd probably still be there. Just not a test taker, never have been. And I, you know, like you, study very hard and to get there. But I agree, there needs to be more detail. If that is what they're talking about and they want it to be like a presentation or you have to teach in a class and have a portfolio, I think that's great because you're actually doing what you're trying to do. But I think it would need to be amended or something to really fully.
And we can propose something as well.
Oh, I think they're two different topics. There's one, there's a test for teachers and there's a whole reference to the Massachusetts Associated School Committee. I mean, secondary education. There are two different topics in the same resolution.
There are two distinct assessments. There's the EMTEL and then there's the mass PALS. PALS is more of a performance assessment for your administrative credential. Whether it be an assistant principal, whether it be superintendent, assistant superintendent, curriculum coordinator. And those are content-specific performance assessments that you have to work through. So they're very different assessments.
It looks like they were, they started to write the resolution about EMTEL and decided to throw in the other one at the very end. It makes sense to me. So I would recommend we not vote for it.
It's unfortunate because I think in terms of increasing the diversity of educators, I mean, studies have shown that if you do, specifically in areas where the students, there are more minority students, if you have people that look like you, there's more propensity for you to go to college. And I know that there are school districts that have these students and they don't have that representation in terms of educators. The unfortunate thing is that, you know, now we're getting rid of licensure. It's unfortunate that there's not this universal type of testing. I think about like when I started nursing, you literally had to take a test for each state until they made this universal type of testing. So it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that this is kind of, I hate to say kind of convoluted the resolution and that there needs to, it probably should have been a little bit more thought through.
Well, I'll give you an example. There's a young man who graduated from the Plymouth Schools. He went, got certified in Massachusetts, went to New York City, was offered a teaching contract, started teaching. He showed up for work on day one, pulled him out and says, you can't work here because your license does not have reciprocity in New York City. In order for you to get reciprocity, it doesn't exist anymore. You have to go in and take all these courses. So he landed up going to teach in a private school where he didn't need the license. But there are so many layers of why certain candidates cannot get into school systems. And I think there is no national assessment, there is no national entry that you can teach from state to state to state. And very similar to assessments for students. And that's why we had this effort to try to have a common assessment, which you saw how far that went.
Yes, yeah. But it's just unfortunate because, you know, when we look at some of the, I can think of some school districts here in Massachusetts where because they don't have a minority pool here, it would be best for them to look out of state. And so now, here's the barrier.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So I, you know, it's, I think there needs some more thought.
Just so, one thing they do offer if you're from out of state, that if you have experience in another state, you can qualify for a temporary license for a year to give you some wiggle room in time for the actual licensure. You're hirable with that qualification based on experience outside. So that is one thing.
Well, I can tell you mental health, though. On mental health, you have to take the state test.
Correct.
You can't, there's a reciprocity because you have to learn the state laws.
Right. The only other piece that does come up with some mental health providers is there's a panel review process. The only two I've ever seen approved were in the mental health field. So it's something that they do grant, but it's based on years in the field of service, if that makes sense. So it's interesting.
Ms. Hunt?
So do we have any kind of direction that if this goes in a certain direction, it would be supported? Or are there anything like you want to think of to the next meeting to make any? You want me to represent any changes? Or do you just want to flat-out say no? That's what we have to decide.
I don't, just to be clear, I think the premise is a good premise.
No, but I meant if we voted no, but, I know a lot of times you say no, but if it goes in this direction.
Yeah, I was almost going to get there. But I think if there is some level of discussion regarding alternate opportunities for minority candidates to enter the field, okay? Because what this is saying, eliminate the EMTEL assessment, I think we can make it attractive for minority candidates to even want to get into education.
Yes.
Because I don't think that we're getting the candidates in education. I think that's a big barrier. I mean, I think if we trained them well, they would pass anything we put in front of them. But if there's direction for, you know, how do we increase these programs so that they can be viable and attractive for people to want to? I mean, even getting into teaching anymore, it's not the most desirable profession.
I don't want to spend forever on this one resolution, but is there a dearth of applicants that we have to make the requirements easier?
We have, when we interview and hire, we look for the certified candidates first. So that's our first level. The fields that are most complex to fill, like. The fields that are most complex to fill, like high school physics, chemistry, special education, those are the more complex ones. And there is a process to file for a waiver with the state. And we do that based on if there's a need. We don't have to hire the certified candidate if they're not the viable candidate, the most qualified in our estimation of the interview process. So we have done that before, but it's really in those areas. Other areas where we find certified candidates who are strong. So we have made, in my time in Plymouth, we've made efforts to recruit at different fairs that bring a more diverse teaching population. The complex part is to get them to want to come work in Plymouth, because of the commute and different things in the city and things like that. So we have, there's a job fair that I go to each year that's more of a diverse population of teachers coming in, different than, say, the Bridgewater State College University Fair. But it's getting people, we really work at it, believe it or not, to try to get a more diverse teaching group. So, but the licensure is usually not a barrier for us.
Okay, we have to take a vote on this, one way or the other. I guess we could take no action, too. What does the committee want to do? Mr. Morgan?
I'll make a motion to vote no on supporting resolution two.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Can you move to vote no, or do you have to move to support it and then we vote no?
Oh, whatever works.
You have to word the motion the right way.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, unless you're withdrawing it.
I'll withdraw if you want to make it easier.
So the floor is open.
I think you can make the motion still, but it has to be.
I'll make a motion to take a vote on resolution two.
Your motion is to take a vote on resolution two. So you're not, your motion is not for or against, it's just to take a vote.
Yes.
Unnecessary motion, because it's on the agenda as an action item.
I know, I just, no one's stepping forward.
I appreciate you, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but it's on here as an action item, so therefore we don't need a motion.
Will we put, will we put additional language to it with an amendment?
Yes, that's what I was asking earlier.
We can work that out right now.
Yeah, let's, perhaps.
Do you have a suggestion on additional language?
I don't have a suggestion. I mean, I can present any amendment that the board wishes.
Does anybody have a suggestion on additional language? Ms. Hayward?
Suggestion or a motion to vote on additional language?
Oh, yeah, because we're not in discussion yet, technically.
What's your question?
I think you have to move to support the motion and then we vote no, if you want no. Isn't that how it works? I mean, am I wrong?
No.
No. If you want to put on the table right now an amendment to the resolution, not to a motion, but to the resolution, we now can vote on the resolution with the amendment.
And then the new language will be brought to the next meeting in which we vote on, which Kim would then amend at, suggest the amendment at.
That's correct.
I would agree.
So does anybody have some language to give us latitude on this?
I don't know if I have language at this time. I mean, I would like to think about it.
Ms. Hunt?
Can I make a motion that we consider that and bring that to the next meeting and have something written down? Because it seems like something we can't come up with right now, right? We need to think about it a little bit. I won't be in the next meeting, but you can get this information to me, and I can vote as to your wishes.
Okay, we will.
So can I move to table it to the next meeting?
I can table the vote on resolution number two until our next meeting.
Yes.
Everybody understand?
Yes.
Moving forward. You guys can develop some language, or any one of us can develop some language. Okay, let us move to school transportation, resolution number three.
School transportation, this is a hot-button topic, as we've discussed for a couple of years now, relative to bus contracts. In Massachusetts, it's very difficult now to get competition or competitive bids. There are limited bus companies. And one of the issues that we see is that Massachusetts general law does not allow a school district like Plymouth to maybe partner with a couple of other districts to kind of bring and consolidate our busing, to be able to have more of an attractive bid, so we could package this and have efficiencies. And that's one of the things that this resolution is trying to do, is trying to open up the door, so school districts like Plymouth and others that have contracts where it's really, we have limited people bidding on these things, to maybe come up with alternative means of having a more cost-effective transportation. So I support this, recommend this resolution, and I think it would be nice to be able to look at other avenues, other than the ones that were kind of streamlined to move forward with.
Ms. Hunt?
All right. They just made a point of saying it's not regional schools, it's the Regional Transportation Authority. Right now, they're required to take the lowest bid regardless of past performance, and that this would also mean a repeal of Mass General Law.
Committee members, discussion on this resolution before we put, take any motions. I need clarification. I actually went through Mass General's laws, trying to find MGLC 71 and 7C, because they're recommending we eliminate those two, so I wanted to read the law to see what's in those two, and I can't find it in the book. Does anybody know what it is?
I think the person in the room that could probably answer it the best is to my right. I don't know if he's willing to dig the channels tonight, but we talked about this morning.
You did, good.
But we did not get into the specifics of Mass General Law language. I didn't pull out my book. If you can find it, Dr. Sorin, tonight.
What have you, you want to read? I can't find, even find it in here.
Yeah. What was the, what was the?
Ms. Badger?
What was the section again?
MGL 7C.
MGL 71 and 7C.
So I think I have it. And it just says, Section 7C, basically, no financial assistance shall be provided for the purchase of buses or operations thereof to any applicant of such assistance unless such applicants and the Secretary of Transportation and Construction shall have first entered into the agreement that such applicants will not engage in school bus operations exclusively for the transportation of students and school personnel in competition with private school bus operators. So you can't have your own if you're going to compete with private. This section shall not apply to an application with respect to the operation of a school budget program if the applicant operates a school system in the area to be served and operating, operates a separate and exclusive school bus program for their school system. So you can't compete or be within the school district.
Okay, so 7C is about.
It's just about who can own.
Conflict between a transportation company and an individual school system.
Yes.
What about the other one? About 71?
That is it. It goes, so it's just the title, Chapter 71, Section 7C.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's just a.
So you covered it. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. That's why I don't use the book, I just Google.
When you're my age, you do books.
That's why I give mine back every year, I'm like, eat it.
All right, so where are we on this one?
I would be supportive.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we support resolution three.
Seconded by Mr. Morgan. Any more questions? Okay, we'll vote on number, resolution three. I assume everybody voted for that, I didn't catch it. Resolution number four, climate change.
Yes, climate change. This resolution is, represents a call by advocates for action on climate change at the federal level and for state funding to anticipate the climatology implications and the emergencies that it may cause. So I'm in agreement with this resolution. My concern is policy and practice, but it must be relevant despite the climate that may or may not exist now and in the future. I mean, I think there's a lot of concern regarding climate change and a lot of discussion nationally. There's a lot of discussion nationally about climate change, and sometimes it gets a little political, but.
Ms. Hunt?
Okay, so the first thing that was expressed is that it's nonpartisan. That was, there was a big discussion about that, that it's a physical and economic thing. And I know that with what you had just said, one of the things that they said is basically this is just for MAS C to go on record as supporting it. It's not saying it has to be funded this way, they just want to go on record as supporting it as an issue, that it's a human rights and general justice issue. They are predicting that the cost to the state for schools could be upwards of $200 million to combat schools that don't have ACs in Massachusetts, as well as all the schools that are near the ocean. So they're predicting in the long run, it could be very, you know, costly to schools if they have to, you know, like you said, we don't know what's going to happen yet. But, you know, that's kind of what it is. So basically what it is, is that they want to go on record as supporting it.
I mean, and Daniel Morton could be beachfront.
Exactly. And there's no way AC there. You open the windows on one floor, you close them on the other floor.
Said it 20 years ago.
Uh, motions. Ms. Badger?
I move that we support resolution number four.
Seconded by Ms. Hayward. Question on the motion? All right, we'll vote. We have one opposed, we have two opposed, and four in favor. One, two, three, four in favor. Motion carries. Okay, a full funding of transportation costs regarding foster care and state care students. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, this is one of the issues that we talk about every time we go through budget, and it's relative to expenses that are mandated by the state of Massachusetts for students that have foster education. If we have a student that's in another school district, excuse me, a student that is actually fostered and they are, their foster family is in another community outside of Plymouth, law mandates that for continuity of educational services, we would provide the transportation to actually keep that child in Plymouth. There is some partial reimbursement of that. This resolution is looking at fully funding these opportunities that exist for students to have continuity of education. We've never had a problem with, you know, allowing these students to stay, it's just a matter of doing business. Our district has some expenses regarding this, and I think it would help us if this was fully funded. So in a sense, it would be a funded mandate opposed to being a partially funded mandate. So I'm in support of this.
Committee? Ms. Hunt?
I'm just going to give you my notes. They said it's in support Suzanne Bump, the state auditor, and that DCF should be pulling these grants now from the federal government. The money is there, always has been, and they're just not reaching for it. So it kind of sounds like, I mean, from everything that they said, it's like it's a no-brainer, that money is there, they're just not asking for it.
Well, just for clarification on the partially funding, this was not funded at all, and then there was an adjustment made for partial funding. So I think any leverage that we can, any highlight we can put on this would be very helpful. It would be wonderful if we got this reimbursement.
Okay. Motion. Mr. Morgan?
I'd like to make a motion to support resolution number five.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Selly is the second. Is there a question on this motion? Everybody has voted in favor. And now the next one is universal quality of pre-K across Massachusetts.
Yeah, you know, I think one of the things that we realized with the funding of full-day K here in Plymouth, that we were one of a handful of school districts that still didn't have full-day K at the time. There are still districts in Massachusetts that do not have full-day K. And I believe that, you know, I would support this. I think that pre-K for all would be, or the most necessary students that need it would be wonderful, and if it was funded, it'd be great. The only concern I have is where the funding's coming from, and that's, my comments relative tonight are, it'd be wonderful if there was a source of funds that would ensure that this would be, would not impact the local taxpayers, because, you know, we fought really hard for full-day K. It took a lot of effort, and I don't know how it would go across in the community if we would try to do something else. But again, if there was a funding source, I think this would be fantastic. Facility-wise, we don't have a space.
Ms. Badger?
Well, no, there wasn't, actually, to be honest with you, there wasn't a lot of discussion on this one. The discussion was that it's pre-K, and we still don't have K. And K is still not mandatory in Massachusetts.
Absolutely.
So we're, you know, but, but there also was just a lot of discussion on, you know, how important it is to have the pre-K part of it, but there really wasn't a whole lot of argument against it. But it was just kind of a curious thing, like, hmm, they want them to pre-K, but we don't have K yet.
It's like the horse. I was just going to say that I think this is wonderful, but I, like Dr. Maestis, feel that we would need to maybe add, maybe we can vote it with an amendment to have it fully funded, if it's something we're going to be mandated to do. It's just my thought.
I think you could propose that amendment right now, if we all agree with that.
Absolutely.
So let's say that.
I move that.
Move the resolution with the amendment that we are only in favor of it if it's fully funded.
Yes.
Everybody understand that? Any questions? Is there a second? Say, what is the second? Okay, any other questions? Okay, with the amendment, we shall vote.
Can I ask a question?
Are you on this?
Well, I was going to ask, is somebody going to write up what, how exactly you want the amendment written, because I'm going to have to propose it.
Because we have two resolutions with amendments.
Well, we don't yet. The other one's tabled.
You will have.
I just dictated, I thought I said we support this with this resolution, as long as it is fully funded. Right, isn't that what we were saying?
Yeah, usually there's a little bit more information.
Sometimes less words are better.
I was just going to say, I'm happy to help write them if there's a couple of people who want to work on the resolutions.
You folks can do that.
I know, I am complaining, but I think we, but I think this is really important, not that it's going to go anywhere, because that's what happens with these resolutions. But we can dream, I'm sorry, it's hard for me. I really need to learn, no.
All right, if that's all you want to write, that's fine. I'm happy to do it.
All right, please do.
Imperfect.
Okay, poverty.
Michelle in Venice.
I moved it, she seconded it.
Yeah, okay. So this one is relative to poverty in children. This resolution would help to ensure that our underserved population of schoolchildren will be provided with the supports and services necessary for lasting success in the classroom. And, you know, I really support the premise, and I really support that we would need to support children that have needs that are going unmet. Just like the previous resolution, I'm in support of it if there are a delineation of what is necessary to be funded, and if there was a means to fund them. You know, I didn't put, I didn't, I added a piece with my recommendation that we need to find out exactly what, this is kind of open-ended, I don't know exactly what they're, what they're saying is necessary. Level the playing field, for what? Close the achievement gap, but what it will help with closing the achievement gap. So it doesn't really delineate exactly what they're referring to.
Ms. Hunt?
And basically, it's exactly what you said, that really, all that they had really said is it's going to be a social safety net for kids. That's really all that I.
May I ask you a question? It says reaffirmed, so does this come up in 2015?
Yes.
And was it voted on 2015?
I don't, yes, I believe so. It's a reaffirmation, so I think that they're just bringing it back up again. Framingham School Committee puts through a lot of resolutions. I don't know if it's because of Beverly or not, but.
Ms. Badger? Oh, I thought, Ms. Hayward? Nope, okay.
I can look up the actual, I can get that information on the 2015 resolution, if you want.
Yeah.
Can you look it up?
Well, I'm questioning why you have to reaffirm something.
That's the truth.
Has the language changed?
Unless, I know that.
It probably didn't go anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
I know that maybe they just want to bring it back to the surface and advocate for it a little bit harder going forward.
Well, poverty is now under this, you know, childhood traumas, you know.
Umbrella.
Umbrella, exactly. And so, once again, this is another resolution that probably should have been a little bit more thought through, in terms of like the language, because now we're looking, because that's part of ACs, you know, as well. So the question is now, you know, we know that this affects how a child learns, but there aren't any sol- but there aren't any solutions. So, yeah, it just needs to be a little bit more thought through.
Quantify, clarify.
These almost look like solutions here, but...
It's generalized, I just feel like it's generalized, it's not...
I, I, that's my dilemma.
Michelle, did you find anything?
I, I don't, I don't see anything. I mean, I found the...
It might be in the book from back then.
That's what I just downloaded it, I just downloaded the book.
Poverty resolutions, let me see. Poverty in children, here it is, right here, but there's nothing, yep, here it is. Did you find it? It's a PDF?
Yeah.
But it's just a resolution?
Poverty in children, yep.
But you would have to look at the following year, 2016, book, to see what the action was.
No, yeah, well, I don't know if it would be, the action would be in there, it would be in the notes.
Well, in this book, in this book, they have action from last year.
Oh, they do, okay.
Okay, so 2016.
All right, we're going to have to move on.
Yeah.
I almost got it.
So...
Should we table this one?
What's the committee feel about this one?
Do you want to do a little research into that as well?
I think, I think so.
It appears, it appears that in 2015, there was a voice vote taken at M A S C, and it was approved.
Oh.
On this, this resolution.
So it's just coming to the surface again.
It was approved in 2015.
Discussing it again, probably.
So it's just to break back on the table, because it was not, it didn't go anywhere. As a, as a body of M A S C, it was approved on voice.
Bad publicity.
Yeah.
Okay, well, now we know the answer to that question, so we can, don't have to worry about that. What do you want to do about it? I guess we voted for it, I'm guessing, in 2015.
I don't know, I'm trying to figure that out.
I'm sure we went through the same discussion.
I'm sure we did. Well, yeah.
You want me to look it up?
Yeah, if you could, yeah.
Do a little search.
And I was sure you guys have a transcript.
Yeah.
A Googling doesn't make for a C T V.
If I may suggest, maybe we look at the next resolution.
Menstrual supplies, resolution number eight.
Yes, I, I talked to Ms. Hunt about this a couple weeks ago, when she shared me with me, shared with me her notes on her meeting, and I was surprised that other school districts don't provide these supplies, and the nurses' office implement does. But I think it, in my opinion, it should be something that we have available for our students. So I do recommend that we should support this.
Any discussion on this one? Ms. Hunt, you want to tell us something about?
Well, I think the, I don't want to use the word, the coolest thing about this, this is a student resolution, so this came from the students. And you're right, it isn't, it isn't an issue for us, but I guess it is across the board, and there are kids in some schools that are literally not going to school, because they know that this isn't, is going to be a problem for them if they're in the school day, they're literally not going to school for it. So it's student-led, it's not a luxury, it's a necessary, it's necessary hygiene, and they're looking for free access to either the nurse, the restrooms, or the locker rooms, or all of that. So that's just, and I, I particularly liked the fact that it came from the students themselves, so...
Ms. Hayward?
So oddly enough, as I was driving to work this weekend, I was listening to a podcast, and it was student-led, it was 13 and 14-year-old girls who talked specifically about this.
Wow.
They came out of the Bronx, and it was a, it was actually an award-winning podcast, and it was called Shh Period, and they talked about the supplies and the fact that, you know, accessibility. So it's interesting that it came up there, so, yeah.
I heard that same podcast. Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, I think I actually listened to that too, and the winner of the short documentary film was about the same subject, but in India. It was crazy, because these women drop out of school because they don't have this, so, not that we're there, but I guess, I guess for us, you know, we just should consider ourselves, once again, ahead of the game, but there are, there are schools...
Okay, floor's open for motion, Ms. Badger?
I'll just say one thing, and then a motion. I know when Cambridge Public Schools went through the same thing, and it was a big deal in Cambridge. They didn't have it, and my friend's on the school committee, and she pushed for it, and, which is weird, you would think Cambridge would have had it, but anyways, I, I move that we support resolution number eight.
Second? Ms. Hayward? Great. Questions? Okay, let us vote. Everybody voted in favor? Yes?
Dr. Swanson, on October 19th, 2015, there was a unanimous vote to approve the Poverty in Children resolution.
Thank you. I figured as much, that we voted once in favor of it. So shall we, shall we reaffirm our vote?
Might as well, I guess.
Floor's open for motions.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson.
Badger?
I move that we support resolution number eight, uh, seven.
Again?
Again, yeah.
Is there a second? Mr. Selly is the second. On a question? And everybody, we have one opposed, everybody else voted in favor.
I'm not for poverty with children, by the way.
No, I know what you mean, yeah, no, I got you.
And now we have the Charter School Funding Reform Resolution. Dr. Maestis?
Charter School Funding Reform, you know, I, I've said publicly that I am not against charter schools, I'm against certain funding mechanisms that, that pose some level of inequity, inequities in, in education today. I'm in support of this resolution, and the rationale stated, and I'm just, I just think that there are some inequities that, that can be looked at, and maybe this resolution can help to do that.
Ms. Hunt?
I feel like we did this last year, or the year before too, because I know, I know that I've mentioned that I actually wrote the position statement for Massachusetts PTA on this, and it said the same thing, and I, I agree with you about the charter school. So as long as they can enroll cross-sections of students, report accurate, report accurate numbers of students, report accurate date of students with learning disabilities, accurate data of students with learning disabilities, funded in full by the Commonwealth, and full funding mitigation funds created by the offset. So that's, I mean, I think, I think we've already done this before again, so...
I think we did it in 2015.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that...
It'll last, no, it was within the last two years.
I believe it keeps coming up, because it never happens.
Never happens.
Right.
And it should keep coming up until it does happen. Ms. Hunt?
And again, too, like, you know, all these resolutions doesn't mean it's going to happen, it just means it's going to be a position that we take, and we try to fight for it. And I don't, I don't know if you, they just appointed me the legislative chair for M A S C, so whatever we decide, it's going to be my responsibility to take the committee and, and fight for this stuff, so it's just, you know, it's not, none of this is set, it's just something that they want to have as a position statement when they're dealing with legislators.
So let me get a clarification on, on the mitigation fund, so migration, when the student leaves the charter school and goes back to the public school, the money doesn't follow the child? It should, but it doesn't?
October 1 is the, it's all based, we do an October 1 report, where we report our student population to the state, and if it happens October 2nd, the money is with the charter school.
And that's, that seems to be a, a date that traditional public schools have a hard time with, because students seem to come back after that date.
There's no proportion.
This resolution is going to fully fund that. I believe that's what it says.
It's asking for...
Money to follow.
Funded in full by the Commonwealth.
Right. The appropriation, the mitigation fund is subject to appropriation, and has not been fully funded in years. So this would fund that mitigation. So as people often say, the money should follow the student.
Right.
Could follow a student for the amount of days in attendance.
This is true, right. Mr. Morgan?
I'd like to make a motion to support resolution number nine.
Seconded by? Mr. Selly? Is there a question? Okay, we'll vote on it. Great, everybody vote in favor. Just to recap, we have, which ones we have coming back to us at the next meeting?
Just one.
Just one so far.
Just one?
Because we've got back to the second one, we voted.
Number two.
Just number two, okay.
Number two, yeah.
And if somebody just gets me that, because I won't be here on the fourth.
Okay. All right, thank you, that was helpful.
Hopefully helps Ms. Hunt.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I'll do whatever you guys...
Anybody want to bring up anything on to all business? Ms., Ms. Badger?
So I'm just wondering about the, I know we talked about it, and that it will eventually get done, but when do we think we're going to be posting the health curriculum to our website for all levels?
Dr. Campbell?
Sorry, I was reading something else. I can't get you a definitive date, we're still, we have some health, we, with our P D coming up in November, and, what is that, November 5th? We're still doing some collaborative work, but I would see some time after that. We're building a website behind the scenes, but it needs to be populated.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on to all business? Anything on to new business?
I don't think so.
Reports and proposals from the superintendent, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight I have four things to report. We had the opportunity this morning to meet with the N E S group, and I, I know yesterday the, some school committee members met with the, with the N E S group, and opening for the whole visit, and it should be, should be a good experience for the, for the team. The, the co-chairs that have planned this have done a fantastic job of preparing the school and the school community for, for the visit. So we were there this morning, and just a lively place for the next two days. It'll be done on Wednesday afternoon, I can tell you, the staff and administration at North will be doing laps with joy when they're done. But a great process, and I think, I was asked a question today about what I thought the process could do for the school, and I said, the process will help this school set a blueprint for what is necessary for improvement for the future. And if there are, when there are things that need to be tweaked, and adjusted, and refined, and integrated, the school will do that. And I think we look forward to their reports, so the school can get busy on that. And I think the principal is, is positioned to do that, and has a support of the staff to actually make some of the improvements that will be recommended. So we're excited to see how the process goes, and we'll be excited to see the report when it's complete. I'd like to highlight last week, we did have a couple of issues with weather, and we also had an issue with a police situation here in Plymouth relative to a stay-in-place. And I just want our community to know that I was out of the district during both of those events, and I'm very proud of our administrative team that was able to navigate the difficulty that we experienced in two days, which was, I think it's a testament to the protocols and processes that we've built in this district over the years, so I thought it was handled extremely well. And one thing that I'd like to highlight, in addition, is for our parents out there listening tonight, and community members, the information that is sent out of our school district is firsthand. It is not anything other than what is happening, actual, actual time, real time, that's happening in the community. So I would hope that parents, stakeholders of the community, if they want to learn about a situation that's happening in town, and they want, relative to schools, please listen to the messages that we sent home, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and also our app that we have, that new app that people are downloading, please rely on those messages. That is going to be your firsthand information. What we seem to be noticing during issues like we had last week, people tend to rely on gossip and internet chatter, more than they are actual messages that are coming out from, we, we got our stuff, information firsthand right from the Plymouth Police Department. So if you want to find it quick, I, I believe we're very quick in responding and getting things out. And we're not going to send something out that's not accurate, and we will send it out when it is accurate. So it may not be 30 seconds after, it might be three minutes, or 10 minutes, or 20 minutes after, but it'll be accurate, and we hope that people will rely on that information, and learn to trust the information that we sent out is, is accurate. So, but again, very, very proud of, of difficult circumstances that we were able to navigate. Advisory dinner, we were at that the other night, and I tell you, it was a great evening, food was great, and the presentations, both of them, a current student and a graduate, did a fantastic job of presenting in front of the advisory team that actually advises the vocational C B T E programs, and what is out in the field, and these two presenters did a fantastic job. Current student who, I'm not sure if you know this, but the Massachusetts DECA president, student president for the entire state of Massachusetts, is a student, Maria Baker, at Plymouth South High School, and we should be very proud of her, she did a fantastic presentation, and it's wonderful to, to see these kids get up and publicly speak, and, you know, did a fantastic job. Very proud of them. And I just want to let the school committee know that about two, three weeks ago, I turned over the gift from Shishikahama that Mr. Morgan brought back, and the Board of Selectmen will actually reveal that gift to the community on October 29th, at their school, at their Board of Selectmen meeting. So I will attend, but just to let you know that that will be revealed to the community on the 29th. So, Mr. Morgan, thank you for bringing it back in, in one piece.
Well, they shipped it, so, I'll be there on the 29th as well.
Right, you know, it was shipped...
To my house, right?
Yes, that's right.
There was no way it was going to fit anyone's luggage.
But you saw it beforehand?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's, that's, that's right.
I accepted the gift.
I think, I don't know what was in that box, I didn't open it.
That's it, that's it.
Any questions to Dr. Maestis on his report? All righty, now we're going to talk to your smart goals.
Yes, I have four goals this evening, and the first goal that I am proposing for this year is, I think all of you realize that our strategic plan is, the current one is known as the 2020 Plan. And, you know, when I first started superintendent 12 years ago, we didn't have a strategic plan, and I think one of the things that I, I thought it was important for us to do was to develop one, and to get it in place, so that we had a guiding document that would kind of lead us to the future. And I think the current framework has really helped us to accomplish a great deal in the school, in the school district. I am proposing that we refresh that plan for the future, which will then become the 2025 Plan. I think this will actually help the next administration to guide the schools moving forward for the next five years, and I think it's timely, in the sense that new superintendent will come in, and they will have the ability to take a look at this, and that'll be the, the guiding document that will help to focus some of these issues. I really wanted a strategic plan back in the day because of my personality, not necessarily because we couldn't do things, but because I, I want it to focus, and I'm, I'm hard to focus sometimes, and I thought the strategic plan would help with that. And I think it has over time. So this goal for this year is to convene a, a team of people, different stakeholders in the, in the community, to actually gather information that will help us to, to refresh this plan for the future. I think a lot of the information that Mrs. Frye was talking about earlier, in this listening session that we're doing throughout the district, as we look forward to the next superintendent, will actually help, some of this will help to inform what we're looking for, as, because what people want are, they want things to happen. They want the school committee and, and the superintendent to actually motivate these changes. So I think that listening that we do throughout that process will help. We will also send out some other communications to stakeholders to, to seek... We will also send out some other communications to stakeholders to seek more input from them as to what's important, and have the opportunity to have some forums to bring people together and talk about what is important to the school district. We'll definitely review the information that will be brought forward from the school committee, to the school committee for the superintendent's search, but I think there's some nuggets in there that we can pull forward, and look at the themes, and actually create some action items for the future. So, you know, I think the action, the as measured by for this particular goal would be the identification of the update committee that we would assemble, survey data that we'll collect, and also the data that we collect from forums that we'll have across the district. And the biggest determining factor is by May, the latest June of next year, that we would have a new strategic plan, that would be the 2020 to 2025 Plan. And I think it would be wonderful to actually have a document in place, and actually a refresh for our school community as the next school year starts. So, we'll be ready for it for 2020. Kind of, you know, when we were developing this 2020 Plan, I didn't know that we'd be here talking about the 2025 Plan, but here we are. So, that is my first goal moving forward. I'll move to Goal Two. Any discussion on that? Thoughts, comments to that? Okay. The second one is relative to Panorama, and one of the things that I would like to do for the school committee in the next month or two is have a demonstration for you with data that is not Plymouth data, just a kind of a hypothetical student, that you could actually see what we talk, when we sit here at the table, talk about student information, and what it means to look at a profile of a child from a social, emotional standpoint, what does it mean? We talk about dashboard, we talk about looking at, making really good decisions and helping students, well, what are we looking at? So, what, you know, Dr. Campbell and I, years ago, actually saw Panorama being demonstrated at a meeting.
It was a joint conference.
It was a M.A.S., CMAS joint conference, probably five or six years ago, and they were in their infancy, this organization, and we always said, "You know what, that'd be awesome, it'd be awesome if we could do this." And as the years went on, it was probably two years ago, when we started with prevention, Panorama actually, we brought them to the table because they could run the prevention survey for us electronically, and they could actually tabulate the information and put it on their website, so that we could actually start working with kids in a very short period of time. So, that's when we engaged Panorama in the social-emotional module that they have. So, Panorama has these surveys that they can offer kids, that are surveys that we can adjust and tweak, along with the surveys that we have already offered kids, and we can couple that with student information, like we talked about before, and, you know, student attendance, trends for discipline, grades, so that we can start making really good decisions based on the complexity of data, but take away the complexity of reviewing it. So, this is a significant goal for the school district, because we started doing this with just eighth grade. We then branched off to high school, now we're going down to the elementary. So, this is the work that you'll see this year, that will be a culmination of two years of work, but this will be the first time that we will have a collective view from elementary to high school, so that by the time a student graduates, we will have collective information, so we can start looking at trends and profiles on students that are really looking at a lot of different pieces of information, that we used to have to go into four, five, six different programs to actually try to make sense of it. Now, we can see it in a dashboard, and I'm really excited for the school committee to have the opportunity to see what we see, and I think it'll motivate you and excite you as well, to start looking at students through a data lens that can help us set and design programming for students. Might be individual with students, it might be groups, it might be school-related. So, with that said, the as measured by for this would be the successful deployment of Panorama district-wide, and I think the second piece of this is the professional development is what is going to help us to really make this effective, because what we want to do with this particular package is make it so that it's just not administrators looking at data, it's practitioners, teachers that see children every day, they can see the data, which is something that our professional development model that Dr. Campbell has put together is really helping this year get our counselors, our teachers, and special education departments across the district to be able to look at this data real time. And what I like about this data is it migrates from our Aspen program into Panorama synchronously. So, when there's an adjustment made to a student profile, it automatically goes into the program, and it's done behind the scenes, and I think this program will be a game changer for looking at student profiles and helping with issues that we see throughout the district. So, the other thing is really, we want to see consistent use across the district. So, in May, I hope to report to you that we have a deployment across the district, where we have from classroom teachers to specialized support staff, school adjustment counselors, counselors, administrators are all in this program, understanding students at a greater level. So, that's the meat of this.
Questions or comments on this, Ms. Badger?
I just, my question is the word consistent use. I think maybe we need a little definition of what you think consistent is, or what you're aiming for. That was the one thing, whether it's a certain percentage, or once a week, or what we're looking to get our staff to do, I just think that would be.
Well, I don't know that, what I mean by consistent is that it's done in a consistent fashion across the district, and across the buildings, not that it, for example, if we have a, every school in the district has a child study team.
Yes.
Where they take a look at, like, a child would get recommended because there's something that they recognize isn't going as well as the teacher would like to see. A child would get referred, child study team would take a look at this data on the dashboard and actually look at, what does the data tell us about this child, and what can we do collectively in our team to make recommendations? What I mean by consistent is that practice of looking at student data is consistent across the district.
Okay.
I'm going to throw another concept at you as you think about this, and I'm operating from a point of feeling fairly ignorant at this point about Panorama, what's the word again?
Panorama.
Yeah, Panorama. Everybody knows that we collect data on students' grades, that we hold on data on students' attendance and behavior, so now we're going to create an electronic database that's going to track a student's grades, attendance, behavior, social, emotional needs. I think parents who are, some parents who are uninformed might be concerned about the fact that we're taking notes on their child's behavior and maintaining those notes, even though we do it now anyway. So, I think a piece of this is education to the parents to not be paranoid about this, that this is information that we'll use for the betterment of your child, not to build a case against your child, because I think there'll be people out there who will respond like that.
And I've thought about that, Dr. Sorensen, from the beginning when we were looking at this, that this is a method that parents are unfamiliar with, because the information, I'll give you an example, we've used a variety of different programs to do the same thing, but it's, they're independent, singletons. This is one program that allows us to do it all in one shot. So, it's allowing us to be more efficient, more effective, and to be able to look at how they all work together. So, I think to your point, maybe correspondence to parents would go out that would indicate that as we have looked at children, the data of children in the years past, we've done this through independent means, we are now using a tool that does it collectively, to make educational decisions.
And the purpose behind it, like you said. Ms. Hayward.
In terms, I think it's, I think it would be wonderful to see, like, a case study of a student. I think Kim and I had a glimpse of it at the last M.A.S.C. meeting, but just to see truly what we use here in the district would be great.
And I think how we would, in a real situation.
Intervene.
How a counselor team would come together and say, "Okay, this is Little Gary, this is where he's at today," and we could actually look at how we use it, and I think parents would be actually pleased at, we're looking at their child with this kind of lens.
Yes.
Right?
Gary.
Moving on to the next one. We can put my data up. I could confuse you even more than you are already. All right, the next goal is, you know, this is something that I have been wanting to do for quite some time, and I was motivated by a parent visit this summer because of a situation that happened in town relative to their adoptive child. And I was, I sat with this parent for about an hour and a half, and the only thing that I could think about doing was raising the awareness of the different complexities that we deal within our community around diversity. And for this particular goal, I would like to create a committee that is relative, very connected to our safety committee, that meets on a cycle basis, and we set an agenda, and we discuss issues around the district that have a variety of stakeholders, that we can set goals and set opportunities to be able to inform our community, our stakeholders, of what is important to this educational community around diversity. I think it's important that we would work with No Place For Hate and bring that group into the fold, but I think it's something that I wanted to do. I think this summer, hearing from this particular parent on the complexity of what she's dealt with in our community, I think I was motivated to actually create this as a goal for me for the year. So, what I'd like to do is, you know, recruit some parents and stakeholders, staff members, school committee members that are interested in actually being part of this diversity committee. I want to schedule monthly meetings that we would have an agenda, and members would actually submit items for this committee, and hope to have several meetings in the queue by the time this is presented to the school committee in May, and also, you know, develop some goals that we would work on as a committee. And I would feel comfortable that the superintendent would actually sit on this committee, but I don't know that I would want to run it. I think we would leave it up to the committee to decide how that structure would operate. You know, with safety, the safety committee, the chief and I started that years ago, and I kind of by default run the meetings, but I think it would be nice to actually have a chair and have somebody actually help to motivate that discussion at the table. So, with that said, Dr. Sorensen, that's Goal Three.
Questions, comments on Goal Three?
I think this is wonderful. I think we're living in a time now where diversity is so complex, it's not what we possibly viewed it as years before, and just to place, I guess, safeguards in terms of our student population, to know that, you know, this is an inclusive environment, I think this is great that we do.
Just a follow-up to that, I think I would feel as a superintendent that I would have another resource, that if something came up in our district, like, I'll use safety again, when something comes up with safety, we have a debrief, right?
Yep.
We have an opportunity to come to a committee, and we could sit back, and we could say, "Okay, what can we do, how do we mobilize, what are the challenges that we have, and how can we, as a community, be able to do that?" And I think the lens is specific to this topic, and it's not here anymore, it's really broad, and I think it would help us in the future to be able to have an opportunity to be able to maneuver and strategize and be proactive on some of the issues that we are faced with today.
And I think also too, it strengthens us as a district, these are things that, in terms of how we're even graded as a district, this is one of those grading tools, and it's a place of improvement. So, I think it's awesome that.
Ms. Badger.
I was just going to say, I think this is a great opportunity to include students, I mean, getting their thoughts and their ideas on something like this, and what they see on the, you know, in the ground, if you will, and then also, No Place For Hate would definitely love to be a part of this, so.
Ms. Hunt.
Well, I was just saying too, you know, just echoing what they had said, that I think too, as a teaching tool, too, for the community to realize that diversity doesn't mean what we think it means, it could mean grandparents raising children. It's not what automatically pops in our head, and I think that, you know, I think we need to let the community know that when we talk about diversity, it's not just certain things, it's inclusive of everything, and I think that, you know, even starting out that way, having the committee have some kind of a, I don't think you can divine it, but, you know, a definition of what we are talking about, or what we're including.
Well, I think with.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I mean. But I mean, I think that's important, just to let the community know that when we're talking about diversity, there's so much out there that's diverse.
It is a bold undertaking. In my practice, we have a handful of genuinely transgendered children, and they struggle beyond anything you could imagine in this room, and they are genuinely transgendered, they're not doing this for attention. So, this is a bold undertaking, and I hope it's successful, because we need it, and I follow Ms. Hayward's comments, it's very different than it was when we were talking about civil rights back in the 1970s and 80s, very different now.
Well, you know, the goal is to put it on the radar, and I think it's going to be up to the committee to march it forward, you know, and represent the complexities of society that we deal with today, you know, and I think it would be helpful to the administration in the district when issues come up, and have a sounding board to bring some of these issues up. And I know No Place For Hate at times are presented with community situations that we are involved in, and that we, I mean, this is a great place to bring it back.
Yep.
Right? And even to have some level of vetting of what those strategies will be.
All right, that's excellent, one more.
The next one is relative to the 400th anniversary of Plymouth. I think you're all aware that we have numerous commitments in the district relative to the 400th, we have our first group leaving next month to England, but there are many, many commemorative activities that I am representing the school district in, I'm part of, I've been planning, so, you know, I think, you know, come July, we will have, I think, well, I'll be very tired, but, you know, I think there's a lot going on between now and July, and even into November of next year, but I just, I just thought this was important to put this on the radar, to make sure that this is done in a timely fashion, and it's done well. And I think you know that my commitment to this community is, you know, I love Plymouth, and I put a lot into it, and I think to be representing this community through the 400 is important, and it's a lot of work, but I think I want to make sure that everything that we're involved in is done well, and the schoolchildren that are part of all of these activities are prepared, and I think we're excited to see how it all comes together. But this is, you know, the as measured by is really, you know, how we, how everything comes together by June, July, and all the commitments we have.
Okay, any questions on the last one? From anybody?
Four excellent goals. Excellent. Well, these are my.
Don't say it.
Fond tongue.
These are the 2020 goals for this current superintendent.
All right, good, all right. Moving along, next thing on the agenda is fundraising activities.
These have to be, it's an action item, Dr. Sorensen.
Did I miss something?
It's an action item.
Oh, we have to vote.
Oh, that's right, thank you very much, it is an action item. So, have you heard the SMART goals? Is there a motion? Ms. Hunt.
I, sorry, I move that we approve the SMART goals for the 2019, 2020 school year, as presented.
And that's been seconded by Ms. Badger. Is there a? And that's been seconded by Ms. Badger. Is there a question relative to that motion? Okay. Seeing no hands, we shall vote on it.
I keep forgetting to use my mouse. It's much easier. It's much easier to use the mouse.
And everybody has voted in favor. Thank you, everybody. And now fundraisers. We have the information in our package. Any committee members with questions? I just have one and it's minor. I did see that PTA Middle School did a GoFundMe fundraiser. So what is that? I know what GoFundMe is, but what do they just say, donate money? How does that work?
Does it not list what the, what the cause was for? I'm sorry.
Oh, you don't have to. I was just curious, because I never saw that before.
Using GoFundMe for fundraising?
Yeah, for fundraising.
We have had crowdsourcing that has been used for, for that.
How does it work?
They just set up an account and people just So you set up an account, and we've gone through this, Gary Costin and I have gone through this in terms of finding the most appropriate crowdfunding venue to approve. And this is the one that we go with. Essentially, they set up an account and the funds go specifically for that particular activity. But we, we, we vet what the activity is that they're asking for.
All right. Ms. Hunt?
I don't know if they use this, but I know GoFundMe actually has a school version of their program that's more towards fundraising versus than anybody, any personal person raising money for something. I do believe there's an actual school version of it.
Right. So that, right. And there's very clear guidelines in terms of how much money.
It's a little bit more acceptable. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Agreeing to check.
Let's do reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Badger?
So we had, I don't, I'm not there. There's my notes. Okay. So we had a, our latest meeting in the, or our first of the year, the Pilgrimage Collaborative. This year, we pleased to let everybody know that our audit, we passed with flying colors. And a big part of the meeting was discussing that last year, even though we started the year with a, I think we were at $500,000 deficit, we were a little nervous. But we ended up coming out on top and that each district is going to get a certain amount of money back. We're getting a little over $11,000 back. So we're excited about that. We, let's see, I think that's the basic highlight. And then we did our reorganization and somehow I am now the chair of the Pilgrimage Collaborative, which is wonderful. I'm very excited about it. It's a great group of people. And so if anybody wants any additional information from what we talked about, I have everything right here.
All right. Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else on the reports and proposals?
I went to the PYGC meeting last week, I believe, or two weeks ago. And so, huh? Two weeks ago. Days go to each other. And so just quickly, I think they talked, well, what we spoke about was the, the moratorium on vaping, just in terms of like the fallout, just with kids who are going through like the cessation, you know, what's the symptomology like behind that? They talked about the interface. There was an interface update on the Behavioral Health Grant and different people from the community who will help kind of advance that information. There was a, a video regarding disinformation on the opioid. More so, I think it wasn't, it was on a person who had received services. And it was an interesting video, I think, towards the end. A lot of information, but in the interest of time. There is obviously a update in our notes.
I, I can report to you that I put up in my waiting rooms, three of the posters that you all brought to this table, Margie brought it. And I go out to that waiting room and I watch the teenagers read the one on vaping.
Oh, good.
And the one on the teenage marijuana and the brain. I think it's very interesting. They'll get, they stand up because they're on the bulletin board and they read them.
Glad to hear that.
I, I just hope that, you know, just because the, this is just so new in terms of like the, the cessation part, maybe there's a way that we could possibly support kids who decide to kind of break from the habit. It's, it's interesting because it's different from smoking because of the levels of nicotine that are found in vaping. So, and even those programs in themselves are kind of just breaking ground. So maybe there's a way that we can kind of look to how we can support students if they decide to, you know, stop, you know, what can we do? Because even with the patches and the gum, it's, that availability is for people over the age of 18. So what are we doing, you know?
Many years ago, when I was a school psychologist, we ran a Alcohol Anonymous meeting right in the school. Kids got a pass out of class and came down to the meeting. And so if we could build in some sort of social support, a club where kids would have to, you know, announce that they're, I guess they'd have to announce they were doing it first before they could announce they're not doing it. And that might be a problem. But it's always better to reinforce the behavior you want than to punish the behavior you don't want.
Yeah.
Anyway, just a thought. Thank you. Building Committee?
Yes. The building committee did meet last Thursday, but due to the volume of claims with the storm in my profession, I, I had to work late. So unfortunately I didn't miss it. And Mrs. Burgess couldn't attend because of medical issues.
Okay. No reports this evening. Thank you. Homeschool plans. Dr. Maestas?
Yes. We have one homeschool plan that has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and it does meet the requirements necessary for the school committee approval. So I recommend approval.
You've heard the motion? Mr. Morgan?
I make a motion to approve the recommendation of administration.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Hunt. Any questions on this homeschool plan? All right. We can vote for it. Everybody voted in favor. Accounts?
Just waiting for it to scroll. There we go. Okay. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S-102419 dated October 24th, 2019 in the amount of $2,415,060 and 1 cent as presented.
The second it is made by? Ms. Badger is the second on that one. Is there a question on the warrant? Okay. Time to vote. And everybody voted in favor. And we have one set of minutes in our package this evening. September the 7th. That's a pleasure of the committee. Ms. Hunt?
I move that we accept and approve the minutes as presented.
Seconded by Ms. Badger. Is there a question? Seeing no hands, we can vote on the minutes. We have all voting in favor. Thank you. Is there any other business that come before the committee this evening? Okay. We stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.